Hi, everyone on the other side.
Welcome to the Board of Education meeting, Monday, September 14th. Before we begin the regular board meeting, we are going to have a public hearing on the Code of Conduct. I want to ask anyone in the public who's viewing this meeting remotely to please put their names in the Q and A below if they would like to comment solely on the Code of Conduct during the public hearing of the Code of Conduct. This is not the regular comment period of the Board of Education meeting. So there have been some changes made to the Code of Conduct to reflect primarily concerns of remote learning, and Dr. Henning Piedmont is going to speak to that.
Good evening, Board Trustees. Thank you, Lauren. So it is a procedure that exists and is a requirement for school districts to adopt a new Code of Conduct every year, and it is part of this process in terms of being a public hearing. And what I'll share with the Board is a reason for these adjustments, which are not at all comprehensive, so it's not the entire Code of Conduct. It's just the portions that pertain to a reference to remote learning. So it currently does not have any references to remote learning, and those are the only updates that have been made. So in each section of the Code of Conduct, which is Policy 5300, in terms of the reference to Part A for parents and guardians, it makes reference to sending children to in-person or remote learning or readiness, attending both in-person or video during remote learning. In terms of the section that pertains to teachers and support staff, again, reference to district staff or any person who is lawfully on school property on remote learning. That's one of the other examples. In terms of a reference to school counselors, again, referencing school property on remote learning or on remote learning with regards to personal biases or any actions that are interest to schools, so it's simply not just the classroom setting environment. In terms of principals--
Valerie, can I just hold? There's a lot of people online saying they can't hear anything you're saying because there's a double echo.
I can't get into webinar, so that's why they can't hear me.
Okay, so is there maybe someone? Maybe, Janine, can you give Valerie your computer so people on Zoom can actually hear?
It's not just the-- yeah, because we can't see. They can't see who's speaking, but they seem to be picking it up from the mic. Can we just push a mic next to it?
Well, I think you have to put-- the mic is a different system.
Yeah, the mic is connected to Patrick, but the webinar is connected to the actual device.
It needs a computer.
Exactly.
I understand.
Thank you. They should be able to, hopefully.
Yes, now your face is showing up as well when you speak instead of-- and Lauren. It was alternating.
Great. Now, we have some technology changes that we have to work out now that we're in the in-person board meeting format. So in terms of continuation, again, these are attached to this evening's agenda. As we look at references to principals and assistant principals, again, the references, you know, whenever there's a mention of, you know, school property or being, you know, on school grounds, the other reference is on remote learning. So that's the change that has taken place. Let's see here if there's another location. There's also language under the Dignity Act Coordinator position, which is, you know, pertains to the use of curricular resources that infuse civility in the classroom setting in terms of instruction and management, both in-person and remote learning are interjected there. And onward with a reference to the role of the superintendent in terms of confronting issues of discrimination and harassment, district staff or any person who is lawfully on school property or in remote learning. And finally, a reference to the Board of Education with regards to policies and this code applying to our district personnel and visitors and students who are on school property, on remote learning or at school functions. And with a final reference to addressing personal biases that may prevent equal treatment of all students in school, classroom settings, or in remote learning. The other area that needs attention actually is in reference to the letter that I sent to the community on Friday about the Zoom bombing incident, where it's still under investigation, but what we've learned is that it wasn't a breach of security protocols. It was a matter of students who actually shared the address and posted it on TikTok. And so that's clearly an issue that's going to have to be integrated into this policy because that's a fairly severe action that undermined all of our security processes and placed students and the teacher, you know, sort of in jeopardy in terms of being in that environment where racial slurs were used, which, you know, is certainly not something that we would expect to have happen. But I think it's important for us to note that this is a good time to consider the Code of Conduct from that standpoint with regards to what's the appropriate behavior that's expected and that all of that's covered under the Code of Conduct. So we will add, we will insert language that does refer to the actions, you know, if a student or students deliberately copy the address of a Zoom meeting or class or Google Meet class for the purposes of posting it on social media to encourage others who see it to interfere, intrude, invade that course or class and that results in the use of racial slurs, you know, anti-Semitic slurs, obscenity, that we definitely will, you know, use our Code of Conduct to address that student's behavior, and certainly that will impact their ability to use the resources that we're making available, as well as, you know, we'll involve, as we have, the police department and the Assistant DA's office who handles hate crimes. So that's what we'll enter without all of that, but certainly that'll be the sort of tone of what's included in the Code of Conduct, so it protects our students and our faculty and staff. And as I said, it's not a comprehensive review. It only focuses on the issues related to remote learning for now. There are many more kinds of things that, you know, the administrators will be looking at throughout the year, and when we have that time to do this thoroughly, certainly there'll be some additional changes that will need to be made. Thank you.
Lauren, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, because I think everyone's getting a double echo. If we're-- and I hate it because Patrick's here already, but we are recording this meeting with everyone here. There's no one in the audience. Is it kind of redundant to be filming it also, and it's actually making it more complex for people at home to hear?
Is it the filming or is it the microphone that we could get rid of the double?
But if you can't get rid of the microphone, if you get rid of the filming, if you get rid of the mic, you have to get rid of the filming.
No, I've heard hearing from the external audiences, but there is not an echo for them.
Okay, there-- okay, I saw a bunch of that, but I guess, okay.
Let's go with that. Let's go with no echo.
All right. Thank you, Valerie, for sharing the changes that appear in the Code of Conduct in our hearing today. If anyone in the public viewing this meeting has any comments particularly pertaining to the Code of Conduct, please enter your name in the Q and A now. We're just confirming that we don't have any commenters particular to the Code of Conduct. Is that correct, Janine?
One second, I'm just going through. No one has said they wanted to speak about the Code of Conduct.
Okay, we will close the public hearing on the Code of Conduct as we don't have any comments from the public on that. We're going to now open the public hearing on the District-wide Safety and Emergency Management Plan. And I believe Maureen, you're going to speak on that for a moment?
Yes. Similar to the Code of Conduct, it's a yearly requirement to adopt the district's--
Maureen, you have to unmute for Zoom.
Oh, gosh. Hello, sorry. Apologize.
I have, yep.
So similar to the Code of Conduct, each year, the Board is required to have a public hearing on the District-wide Safety Plan. It is after the Board adopts the District-wide Plan this evening that, along with our internal building-level plans, which are not made public because of the sensitivity and making sure that our internal responses to a variety of different things that could happen are just used at the building level. So once that happens, they're updated and sent to the state each year as a yearly requirement. In terms of this year's District-wide Safety Plan, the entire plan, other than the requirement now to have the bus dispatcher and your head drivers on the District-wide Safety Team, that's a new requirement, and other than that, there was just the changes of our staff that are reflected in that plan. At the building-level plans, those do reflect more detailed responses with COVID, which, again, it's named this year specifically where in the past it would just talk about pandemic-type responses, but it definitely has, they've added more detail to the building-level plans in response to that, and also in that, though, it really refers to taking the guidance, of course, from the CDC and the Department of Health. It does have some things unique to Hastings, but again, refers back to that that would not be something that the district would make a call on, but rather they would follow whatever the guidance was at the Westchester County Plan. So that's all that our current changes are for tonight's plan. And again, if there's no public comment or no questions from the Board, that we would move forward and adopt that plan so we could submit it to the state. Oh, and then the one change on our, excuse me, internal plans, we, up until this year, we had the middle school and high school had two separate response plans, and the consultant this year made a recommendation to have one that is for the entire Farragut complex, and we agree with that.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
If anyone in the public attending the meeting would like to comment specifically on the changes to the District-wide Safety and Emergency Management Plan, please enter your name in the Q and A at the bottom of your screen. Janine, I'm just confirming that we don't have comments or questions regarding the safety plan. All right, there are no public comments related to the public hearing on the District-wide Safety and Emergency Management Plan. So with that, I'm going to call to order tonight's Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, September 14th. Welcome Board Trustees, welcome Student Trustees, Dr. Henning Piedmont, Melissa Samansky, Maureen Caravallo. And to those viewing this meeting virtually, we apologize for the glitches in our meeting. This is the first time we're participating together in the auditorium in the high school while you're viewing this remotely simultaneously at home so that you might be able to participate in any public comment as necessary. Before beginning the Board of Education meeting, I just want to remind the public and any employees viewing that the Board of Education is an elected Board of Directors for the district. The Board is a governing body responsible for establishing the goals, setting policy, and overseeing resources for the district. The superintendent is the district's chief executive officer and administers the day-to-day operations of our schools. At board meetings, sometimes the Board is listening to the superintendent's recommendations or information from administrators so that we can be informed of what's happening in the district and can provide guidance as a governing body. Sometimes the Board asks to hear specific information so that we can decide if the superintendent's recommendations are within our goals and within the capacities of our human and financial resources. Tonight, after any announcements, we may hear information regarding the status of our schools and their reopening as part of the administrative comments at the opening of the meeting. This is an informational discussion. And with that, Dr. Henning Piedmont, if you could please move on to any announcements.
Sure, thank you very much, Lauren. So I just wanted to congratulate Hillside for having their kindergarten registration and orientation today. It was very exciting to make sure that students were in--
Yeah, I think you have to unmute.
Unmute, okay, sorry about that. So I'd like to congratulate Hillside for having the kindergarten orientation today. This week, they have orientation for each grade level, so that's very exciting for them, and I want to thank them for all the work that they've done to make that possible. I also want to just bring to the attention of our parents, in particular those at Hillside. They're the first families who are completing the COVID-19 health questionnaire. It's available, if you are an Apple user, the app is available. The Android app is not, has not been made available to us yet. It is coming and expected, and that will be shared. Families can still go onto our website and use the form that is a part of the web form. So all those directions were shared on Friday with our community. And if you have any questions, you can speak to John Decams, who is the COVID-19 Safety Coordinator at Hillside. Each assistant principal serves in that role, so if there are ever any questions, please make sure that, you know, families of Hillside, to reach out to him. Next week, when we are in the hybrid model, we'll have many more parents accessing and using the COVID-19 screener, and certainly there'll be some questions. And again, at Farragut Middle School, Kevin Hanlon is the COVID-19 Safety Coordinator for the middle school, and Melissa Hardissey is the safety, I'm sorry, the COVID-19 Safety Coordinator for the high school. So those are the point people to call in contact, and I provided all of that information in the communication to the community on Friday. I'd also like to point out that voting will take place here in the district, here in the Corcoran Gym, as well as at Hillside in the All-Purpose Room. So that's on November 3rd, and so that means that all of our students will be learning remotely. So that's underway, and we'll make sure that we provide that information in a timely fashion. The village and town, we're, you know, really scrambling to try to find appropriate sites and locations for voting, and so it will be in the district, and our schools will be operating on a remote learning platform or on a remote learning schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Now we have administrative comments. I believe Melissa Samansky will begin.
Good evening, everyone. So I wanted to begin by providing a remote learning update. Our Hastings team has been working extremely hard to design an engaging, joyful, and organized remote learning environment for students. I'd like to thank our teachers, our administrators especially, our teaching assistants, our teacher aides, everyone who's been engaged in professional learning and doing the best they can to create a wonderful welcome for our students. Things went relatively smoothly overall the first week, particularly given anticipated concerns about regional bandwidth limitations, having had to navigate intermittent disruptions that occurred with Google Meet, Google Drive, Zoom, and NearPod, and none of these disruptions were within our control, nor were they unique to Hastings, and our teachers were flexible, graceful, and creative when they occurred. We did have some incidents, which you have read about, and that Dr. Henning Piedmont just referenced, where non-Hastings students entered video conference sessions, which are under investigation. And again, we are, we're not completely sure whether or not they were non-Hastings students, but it is possible that they were not within our district. Teachers have been integrating a variety of different resources to support student engagement, including Jamboard, NearPod, and EdPuzzle, so there's been a lot of learning going on and new accounts being created for lots of new web-based resources to support student engagement and learning. At Hillside, it is reported that things are going well, with challenges around student stamina to stay focused throughout the day for our littlest learners. At the middle school, there is a similar report. Attendance per period is decreasing as the day goes on, though. Daily attendance remains very high overall. Student engagement during class sessions is good, and the week at a glance is working well as one of our signature practices. At the high school, attendance is very high, things are going well, and feedback has been very positive. New web-based resources, we've been launching NearPod, so that's our first new resource officially with professional learning out of the starting gate as a new web-based instructional resource, and will soon be launching keyboarding without tiers for Hillside Elementary School, and that's to support students to develop efficient typing skills. If there are families who would like to have expedited access to this learning resource, as we're rostering students and supporting learning around this resource, or if there are any middle school families that would like to have their student rostered with an account, they can contact me directly. So we are off to a good start. We do have some bumps that we have anticipated. The system has been very graceful in navigating all of them, and I'd like to say thank you to everyone for uniting around that.
Okay. I'm also going to give an update around technology. We're on the hardware side of things. Beginning really in March, our technology department has been extremely busy on all fronts. The team has been working nonstop from deploying devices to ensuring the integrity of our infrastructure, to creating technology accounts and rostering new software to support our students in the remote learning. And Melissa has been updating the Board each week, and we've added, you know, quite a few resources this year. In terms of the Chromebooks, as soon as schools did close, the team began to deploy our existing Chromebook inventory that we had available to us to students that were either without devices, and we also did provide at that time students with Wi-Fi access. As time progressed, it became clear that with the need to plan for a longer remote learning model, we would need to secure enough devices to support all learners for both when we're in remote and also with the hybrid to limit the amount of shared devices in the district. While we were initially planned for one-to-one Chromebooks for students in grades three through eight in May, we subsequently decided to plan for requests as they continued to come in from our younger grades, having already had the one-to-one in place for the high school students. The number of devices began to grow, and upon returning to school, the teachers now are requesting additional devices also, although we did put out something in the spring, and there were a few people who did take advantage of that. At the time, we didn't have many teachers reaching out. That being said, despite a national shortage of devices, we do expect a majority of our device order to arrive in the next week or so. We actually got a shipping confirmation today. In terms of bandwidth, as we developed our hybrid model plans, we realized that our current bandwidth would not be sufficient. After performing some bandwidth tests in district, the decision was made to double our bandwidth. Fortunately for us, we made this decision early on and moved forward with the Lyric Supplying Bandwidth proposal. This was a very well timed decision because shortly after we secured an additional one gigabyte of bandwidth from Lyric, they informed other districts in the region that they would not be able at that point in time to expand or increase their bandwidth because of their own infrastructure issues. Additionally, the district is currently having a supplementary fiber run installed to provide redundancy in our system. For those who don't recall, this project began last year after the district was down for a few days last summer. This was to give us the additional failover to prevent us from having lost connections if one line went down. This project would have been completed if it had not been for the COVID delays, and if that other line was in place today, we would actually be able to also increase our bandwidth even further. Currently, our current fiber run can only support that one gigabyte that we're currently on. But again, the other line, we were fortunate, we were putting that in for redundancy, but that will actually help us grow our bandwidth if needed in the future. The technology team has been monitoring our bandwidth since the teachers returned. Currently, we're about at half capacity during last week's superintendent's conference days. We're seeing a steady increase as additional devices and as teachers are returning, and as Melissa had mentioned, we're having some of our teacher assistants and others hopping on to assist students during this remote learning plan. We're going to keep our eye on it, and we're going to continue to test the bandwidth, and the team will also analyze our Wi-Fi capacities. In an effort to minimize the Wi-Fi issues, desktop cameras were installed and headsets with extension cords were purchased. This was intentional because we really wanted to, you know, ensure that all of the equipment was working, and we are looking, we did actually purchase some wireless headsets, but we're going to be testing those, and just, we want to be really smart about our decisions because as we enter the hybrid model, we know that we'll have some more devices getting onto the system, and we want to make sure that the system can handle it. Regarding computer hardware, the first week the teachers were on-site helped us tremendously because it really gave us an opportunity to address the issues relating to computer hardware in their classrooms. That is continuing still. As the weeks go on and as the days go on, we're really able to address and, you know, ensure that things are working well in all of our classrooms. As a result, the call volume during this remote learning first week was relatively low compared to last year's because of the first week that we had in. So I think that was a really smart move, having those four superintendent's conferences really helped, especially with so many, so much technology being used this year, it really helped us reduce this week's call volume. Calls do continue, however, mostly related to logins and minor global issues that Google is experiencing. This week, we're going to continue to address any help desk items that are, you know, ongoing, and the team is in the process of updating the Apple Mac lab for the art room, which is a long-awaited upgrade there, and they're also updating the switches in our server closet. So, you know, overall, like Melissa said, we've had some bumps in the road, but we're working through our technology issues, and having those extra days, I feel were really helpful to ensuring everything works well in the remote model, as well as hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen, for spending all that time working on this. You've been at it nonstop. That and the meal program, you know, from day one, and with all the technology, you know, your dedication to all of this has been just, you know, outstanding, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Maureen and Melissa. We wanted to welcome the student representatives, Sophia Monero and Sabine Hinkate. I hope I said your name correctly. If either or both of you want to share a student report, this would be a moment to do that. And thank you, Doug, for sharing the Zoom.
Hi. Overall, in the high school, the first week was really, really good. So I'm going to start with some things that worked well. Zoom breakout rooms are awesome. It's a great way to actually talk to your classmates. When a teacher's lecturing on Zoom, you can't talk to anyone unless you're side texting, which you should have do. A lot of my teachers have started implementing five-minute stretch breaks in the middle of class, and that's really helpful to help refocus and to actually move your body. If a teacher didn't say "stretch," I know a lot of students probably wouldn't stand up for the full seven-hour school day. Lastly, NearPod is really helpful. It helps to stay engaged when you have the teacher's presentation on your own screen, and you can actually type questions into it, or if the teacher asks a question, you can type your answer. Some things that didn't work so well, even though schools-- Even though school's definitely more engaging than it was in the spring, it's still really isolating to be at home all day. I'm lucky enough to have a sibling, and my parents are working from home now, so there are people in my house, but I have some friends who are totally alone all day, and it's really lonely. Also, it's hard to do homework for multiple hours after school on a screen, after doing school on a screen. A lot of my classes are giving us online textbooks. I know many students would appreciate a hardcover textbook to do homework from. And this was touched upon by Dr. Henning Piedmont, but the Zoom bombs. I was in one of the classes that had some intruders. It was actually a Google Meet, and it was pretty scary, but my teacher quickly ended the meet and started a new one, which was great. Lastly, it's been a bummer for seniors, but we got these masks. See, they say seniors. That's fun. And I'll end by introducing our new student rep, Sabine Hinckety. She's sitting on the other side of the room.
Tilt the camera, Doug. Tilt the camera.
Thank you so much, Sophia. And it's, it's a pleasure to meet you, Sabine. Thank you both for coming to be together with us in auditorium today.
Okay. Hi. My name is Sabine Hinckety. I'm a junior at Hastings High School. I have been living in Hastings for 13 years, I think. I have two younger sisters. One is a freshman and one is in fourth grade at Hillside. I also play soccer and softball, and I play alto saxophone in the high school band. And yeah, I don't really have anything else to say personally. I just want to agree with everything that Sophia was saying. I've been talking to friends, and pretty much everything that she said has also been coming out from other students. So yeah, I'm really excited for this year.
Welcome to you both. We're so happy you're here.
Thank you both. We're now opening our, our meeting to public comment. I want to remind any viewers that are participating in this meeting remotely that you should type your name in the Q and A down at the bottom of the screen, and you will be called on individually to participate by providing comment up to three minutes. When you speak, if you could please state your name, and if you're a resident of Hastings. And Janine Jenauer is going to call any names and provide the time for you once, once we get started. So please write your names here if that's what you'd like to do. At this time, we don't see any names printed in the Q and A for public comment. So I'm going to close this first comment period. There will be a second period for public comment near the end of the meeting. We have one presentation expected today, and that is from Maureen Caraballo, providing us a construction update.
Yes, thank you. Just bear with me one minute, and I'll pull it up. Janine doesn't think that she's going to be able to share her screen on this, but this is just a, just an update on where the status of the projects. Okay. Yes, so it is attached under the board docs, even for, for anyone that's at home. There is a slide deck attached next to the presentation tab. And similar to last year, each week we'll be sharing, I'll be updating the board and providing a presentation. Next week's board, our next board meeting will definitely be, give you an update on the budget and where we are so far, and we'll, we'll be able to, we'll have a little bit more information to share at that time. But just for this evening, I just wanted to update the board and the public on some of the timelines and some of the work that has been completed. So the first project that, that was started, that we started at the end of the last school year was the Hillside Infrastructure Project. Under that particular project, there was some window replacement being done, flooring abatement and replacement in the, in the, both the kindergarten and the first grade hallways, and repointing and brick replacement in areas of the building that were identified. So in terms of the window replacement, the storefront windows at the main office have been replaced. There, if you, if you are to go up to Hillside, you'll notice there are two of the panels that will be replaced with new glass. So if you see kind of two of the windows that don't look as shiny as they should, it's because they're just waiting on some custom glass, as those were custom windows to allow for the air conditioning units to be above those. So, and then the, the remainder of the windows are in production, and, and similar to a lot of what I'll be sharing with you tonight, and as the board is aware, because of COVID, there was definitely a good amount of delays around a lot of these projects and definitely in the manufacturing. So the windows at the back of Hillside that are scheduled to be replaced, we anticipate all that work will be done between now and I would say just roughly December, and it'll be done over the, the weekends and when we have breaks. The abatement is done and the floor is replaced, and next week I will be sharing some before and after pictures, just so people can kind of remember what it looked like before, and you'll appreciate how nice and bright that hallway looks now. And it is, the flooring that was selected there will be, we, we've tried to stay consistent, so in the new part of the addition, it'll have a similar flooring that, that was also selected for that plan. Repointing, again, very, very small pieces, but always very important, and all the work we're doing to really keep our buildings watertight and make sure that, that, that's always a priority for us, so that work was also completed. Hillside roofing, the entire roofing system was removed and insulated and replaced. The finishing work there, which is really the metal flashing that goes around the, the, if you, if you look at Hillside, you'll notice that the metal flashing that kind of trims the building, that, that, that's the one piece that has to be completed. And then there's some brick finishes up on that roofline that are also going to be done, and we anticipate that work to be done in the next month. Middle school and our high school roofing project, this is a very, very large project. This will continue through the fall. This project, because of approvals, didn't get started until a little bit later than our Hillside Roofing Project. In addition to that, as, as we've been talking about, and there's a change order on tonight's agenda, there was some unforeseen conditions found when the roof decking and the, the metal material that goes around the walls of the roof, when that was removed to replace the roofing, they did find the brick around the, the building where the roof is being replaced to be in a, in a very terrible state of disrepair. And, and because of that, we needed to, to have a change order on this job. This building's very old, and unfortunately, when you do some of these larger infrastructure projects, there are going to be some unforeseen conditions. That is why if, and we'll go over the financials in more detail next week, but if the board, when we, when we do go back over that process, there was the original budget, but there was a 15% contingency on all of the projects, as well as escalation of 4% a year. So when we, when we have change orders, and, and you'll see like how, how those dollars are applied, and, and you can see how quickly, especially in an old building like this, we've been fortunate where the, the other projects I discussed tonight, those actually came in a little bit under budget. In this particular project, we will be using all of the contingency that was available and the, also the escalation that was budgeted for this work, and it'll be another, a couple hundred thousand dollars more than that. But again, that will be covered by other areas in which we didn't need to use some of that contingency. But the, the thing is that with an old building, the, you know, the wall's held up for a very long time, and because of the age of the building, everything has to be done in kind, and it has, we're required to run our designs through the state historical preservation. So because of that, we really, in, in terms of replacing that wall, we were kind of tied to the design that existed. But with that being said, we're moving forward. We had three different contractors come in and give us quotes. We feel very confident that all the work and all the, the walls and any of the brick that they were concerned about, it's all being addressed in this change order this evening, and the building will, that, that work will be around way be, after we're all, all gone. So in order to start with that work tomorrow, there, there will be scaffolding arriving here on the school street side of the building, and they're going to start erecting that scaffold, and that will be run the, the length of school street and wrap into the courtyard. Once that scaffolding is up, they'll be able to start the process of removing that brick and replacing it. And again, the, the scaffolding itself takes about two and a half weeks to erect, and that, that work will continue on similar to, to the, the rest of the project. We anticipate that, that project going into late fall. The cornice that is also part of that contract is being fabricated now, and we anticipate that to be replaced next summer because of the, the type of work it, it's involved. It was, and, and the fabrication of it, it, we decided that it would be best to put that, you know, put that off to next summer. Fargo Complex Boiler, so the board had the opportunity to see the boiler room, which is pretty fascinating when you go down there, and, and the size of the boilers that heat this complex. The new boilers are installed, and all the tubing has been done. We are just waiting on our new boiler controls that need to be installed for this unit to be fired up, and we anticipate those to come in probably later this week, early next week. And the boilers will be what, what they call substantially complete. That means that they're about, they'll be close to completion with a couple more final evaluation that has to happen by the engineers before they sign off. So that, that's pretty much wrapped. Hillside Edition, again, we're, I feel like I'm, we're always in the final stages of review, but, but it is a large project. And again, COVID-related delays, the state was, got very, very fairly significantly behind on all their approvals, and especially with a large project like this. We do anticipate an approval by the end of September, and based upon that award date, we're looking at a timeline to bid and award the project by the beginning of November. The documents are pretty much already prepared, unless there would be any change by the state, that would just be a smite, a slight modification to the bid document, and we would be ready to post that. Based on that date, we're, we're planning to have a mobilization of that project the week of November 16th, and for construction will occur really through the following October, and again, with that substantial completion date at the end of October of, of next year. And we, you know, we've talked about with this timeline, the, the building would more or less be coming online probably after the holiday break that year. Middle School Auditorium and the High School Music Suite, that is in the final design and engineering of the, of the middle school auditorium. It's being priced by the estimator because we want to make sure that our, what we're currently looking at, that we have the opportunity to see the pricing before we submit that up to the state. Both of them, I think we're anticipating that we'll be able to submit those plans to the state in November, once the board has an opportunity to review them. And, and that's why when I was mentioning the budget, I think by next, next board meeting, we'll have the, the 30% design detail budget that the estimator can provide to us, and that'll be helpful as we look at the, all the projects and where we, where we stand in the budget. We anticipate an, an approval for those projects based on a November to middle of March 2021. Bid and award those projects in May 2021. Construction to begin the end of June 2021. Of course, the middle school auditorium's a little bit larger of a project. We anticipate that project would be done by the end of October 2021. And the middle school music suites, which are the offices, storage in, in both rooms in the high school, we anticipate that, that would be done by the end of August and available for students come September. So that's just an update in timeline, and again, next week, we'll be able, I will be able to show you some before and after pictures, as well as give you a status update on the budget, the budgetary numbers related to this work. Thank you.
Thank you again, Maureen, for managing this and keeping all these pieces moving forward. It's very complicated and complex on those meetings. It is. It really is. It really is. And you couldn't have a, a more capable steward over all of this, so thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Maureen. Do any board members have any questions or any thoughts about the information that Maureen shared about the construction projects?
I'll just, I'll just say that, again, I'll echo what Valerie said. Appreciate you really staying on top of this, Maureen, in the context of all the other crazy financial things we've got to manage with COVID. And I know that I look forward to seeing the financials because I know a lot of people are, we're getting questions around town about how are we approaching this? What are we approaching? What's changed? And so that'll be good to dig into that next time. So thank you.
Absolutely.
I just had a question.
Looks like Jody's trying to speak. Is that, we're not hearing it, Jody's, Lauren? I don't know.
Janine, are you capable of addressing her audio? Jody, you're not muted on our end if you want to.
It's very low, Jody.
I don't think it's Jody. It's our volume.
It's not coming through our computers, but we can crank it over here.
Go ahead, Jenny.
My volume's all the way up. Can you hear me? Will we be seeing the financials, Maureen, before you actually put us out to bid?
Oh, sure. So, so Jody had asked whether the board would have an opportunity to see where we are currently in terms of the bond prior to, I imagine you're talking about the, the work that hasn't been bid yet. So, oh, sorry, I'm, I'm off. Hello? Sorry, Jody. So Jody had asked whether we would, the board would have an opportunity just to kind of review where we are in terms of the entire bond budget before other work was going to be going out to bid. And as I had just mentioned earlier, the plan would be to, at least next week, get, not next week, next meeting, we would be going over where we are to date. I don't anticipate that would have any impact on going out to bid. And again, when you go out to bid, you always have the, the opportunity to not award it if there was an issue with the bid. You know, you always want to go out to bid, and similar, just to remind the board, with the middle school roofing project, we did reject the first round of bids and went back out with some modifications. So yes, you'll have the opportunity to see the budget, and that will happen before the, time-wise, before we'd be going out to bid again anyway. Although I, even when you go out to bid, you still have the opportunity to review the bids prior to awarding.
Going, having drawn where we're going, just going, in terms of how it affects our design, what we want and what we don't want.
So are you, you were just saying how we, we had talked about scaling back some of the scope? I did, oh, sorry. Goodness, I, I, when I hit it twice. Jody, you were, you were saying about, did we go over some of the items we had talked about, reducing some scope in terms of trying to get the budget back down, correct?
Well, in just general, are there things we need to rethink at all? At this point, going through what we've gone through?
Well, we, in terms of, we did talk of, as we always have, we always look to see where we are in the entire budget and make adjustments. That, that's part of any bond project. This would not, I mean, I know, I know you're, because of the current financial times we're living in, but that's just a process. When you go through a bond, you are, as the, as the bond process moves forward, we do make adjustments where needed and look at scope and look to see where there's opportunities to, to save money or reduce scope. But I think right now we are committed to moving forward with the, you know, projects, unless there was some bids that came in way above what we were comfortable awarding, because that's what the public did vote on, the, the work. So really, at this time, to not do some of it is really not an, an option, but I do think it's smart, as we had talked about, to try to not use, or try to reduce the amount of money we would need from the capital reserve, understanding that we want to keep a good amount of money in that. And we do have the opportunity to reduce some of the scope that we had spoken about with all the projects, quite frankly, with both the Hillside Edition, as well as the middle school auditorium, there are opportunities to save, save some money. middle school auditorium, there are opportunities to save some money on some of the designs.
In general, Maureen, the initial, I guess it was a change order. The architects sort of thought the bid was way too high, and I see farther on, it's still in the $500,000 range. And that's now we're getting a suggestion that we do, they are recommending that we accept it now at 500,000. It's pretty similar to what it was when it was way higher than what they thought, though, right?
Well, the difference was the initial bid was really for the roofing project and some of the other work. Actually, this was like an unforeseen condition because when, until they removed all the roof decking and the metal and the, is when they uncovered the state of the walls. But thankfully, we did go out to bid, because if not, then we would have been much higher with the original bid, and we did make some changes in scope to that. Because again, even with roofing, sometimes you can, there's opportunities for using different materials, and they actually, sometimes it's just even a timing. We had a short timeframe on the original bid for the middle school roof, and I think because of the short timeframe also, we didn't have the number of bidders that we had liked to see. So by going back out to bid and extending that timeframe, we also felt they were able, there were some people that had said, you know, they just didn't have the time to put a bid together. So with the recommendation now is really for an unforeseen condition. But again, as I mentioned, they did bring in three separate contractors to bid the work, and they did look for ways to reduce the scope. Unfortunately, the brick work and the square footage of the work was significant.
Perfect. And then I would just like to bring attention that we do have the 15% contingency in other areas that you were talking about, but I think we have to stay focused as a board to respect that we've added significant expenses to our COVID purchases, and this building project is going up, and we have to find other places that we might consider, whether in this different staffing environment. It's something that we have to continue to look at because we have a lot of residents that continue to hear us talking about a lot of our successes, but they come with dollar signs. Before we end that, there was earlier, I did want to, I didn't know the actual time I wanted to jump in, but I think Valerie and Maureen, there's obviously always need for commending excellent reports. And I think the technology piece that both of you led, more bandwidth and more Chromebooks before others jumped on it. So if there is concern with this going over budget, I would like to say 15 minutes ago, we did hear excellent news, and I know it's from your department, so thank you for that.
Thank you as well. And just so that you know, last year, we considered live streaming, I'm sorry, considered live streaming the board meetings. So last year, we considered live streaming the board meetings. Patrick did some investigation for us to see what the village was using. It's our recommendation to consider looking at that again, because, you know, we want this technology to work for our community who can't be present. And it just, you know, the more sort of devices we have, the less likely we're going to have the, you know, the ability for the community to access the board meetings as they are happening right now, rather than having to record. What Patrick is doing is recording it, but the next phase, and we weren't ready for that because we, who anticipated this, right? But we had a lot of conversation about it. But just so that, just to put that in your mind as an option, we explored, we have an avenue for pursuing, but we chose not to do that because at the time, we certainly didn't anticipate this. So thank you.
Yes, but yeah, definitely not the technology for the board meetings. I'm more specific, adding the 1 gigabyte bandwidth for our education purchases and buying the Chromebooks before there's a national shortage. Technology, yes, Friday and Monday, I guess we're thinking more about board meetings, but also getting that second T1 line all the way in, in the plans that we had in advance are going to be very well needed and rewarded. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just wanted to say, I know, Jeremy, I believe you're on the facilities committee this year, right? I saw your name next to it. So, you know, as we are kicking off the school year too, and as we move forward with the work, we'll, in addition to the board and having meetings and providing updates, we'll also be working together as a facilities committee and going kind of in more detail as we look at the projects that are still, we're, you know, still waiting to move forward on. So that's another opportunity to kind of get into a little bit more detail, and then also provide those updates for the rest of the board as well.
Just a quick question, well, echoing what these guys said about keeping on top of it all, it truly is amazing, Maureen, so kudos to you. I was wondering if before we see the final draft too, if some of the teachers will have a chance to look at the auditorium designs and the music suite designs, because I remember in one of these iterations, they actually scaled back some of what we had been thinking. So they might have some, a different view too of the space, and, you know, maybe that's a money saver, or maybe it's just another set of eyes to look over the ideas. Are they ever included in that?
Yeah, I want to say that the music suite really has not changed in terms of what was, with the music department that was heavily involved with giving information to the designers in terms of what was, of course, very important to them with storage and how the space worked. And we did look at, look at it a couple of different ways. So they will have an opportunity before that goes out to bid. I think if I remember, that space in particular was more straightforward, and I think the storage was of their highest concerns. So they will absolutely have an opportunity to kind of see where the design is at. I think what's important is to get that pricing done, and I think as we know, you know, we've learned that sometimes we really like things, but then the pricing comes back and then we're like, ah, you know. So I think by doing this, and we do have it, but I think really having that, so when we do present it to people, that if there are things that either have to be tweaked, not so much, I'm not really thinking as much, say, in the music room, but with the larger project, then by the time we come to the meeting, we can present to them what was being, you know, what we were thinking, what the price is associated with that, and what some other alternatives may be. So they'll absolutely have that opportunity to see it, but, you know, we really wanted to have that pricing in hand first. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Jody has.
I see you, Jody, that you'd like to speak.
Yeah. Just one, I think this goes back to Melissa, the feedback that you gave us, it doesn't require a response now, but at some point, I also hope that we could hear, when we're talking, when we get to talking about plans, the entry plans, more about little details. For example, I'm thinking about the high school and I guess the middle school, details about kids going to the bathroom, taking mask breaks, lunch, and all the details of how all of that will get managed. I know it's like a lot of, a lot to organize and manage, but it's something that I think we felt we'll have to hear at some point.
So Jody, that's something that we've all been collaborating on, and just broad strokes, you know, making sure that students are receiving scheduled mask breaks is something that the building leaders are collaborating with the teachers directly on, so that those are scheduled. In terms of lunch, we've talked about as much as possible, especially now, that students should be eating outside. And looking at the outdoor spaces, I know that for the Farragut complex, Melissa Hardesty actually was the one that created a Google sheet where people could sign up for the use of those outdoor spaces, so that we're making sure that it's transparent to everyone throughout the building who's using which space when. But there is absolutely every intention to have students outside as much as possible. In terms of moving through the building, we made a conscious decision not to create a lot of transition time, because we felt that it would actually create more congregation in the hallways. So we opted to maintain the schedule and the current transition time, so that students would keep moving, but that we wanted to honor that students would likely be late in some cases, and to be flexible and to be responsive as we acknowledge that they're navigating a new environment, they're trying to maintain that social distancing and moving through in a safe fashion. So that's just sort of a broad strokes overview. And I think that once students are physically in the building, I think it will certainly add another layer for us to really see how it's brought to life and action, so that we can then iterate off of that.
Thank you, Melissa, for answering that question. I just would like to keep us focused on the presentation of the construction update. Were there any other comments or questions for Maureen about that? And just suggest that if trustees have other questions, that they bring them up in the trustee comments at the end, if there are items that didn't come up in discussion today that you'd like to either hear more about at our next board meeting or briefly talk about. Maureen, I just had one question regarding the scaffolding. You mentioned that it would be about two and a half weeks to get that erected. Does it then pose any problems with the change of weather in terms of getting that roofing work done? I'm sure they've taken that into account, but it sort of flagged in my brain as possibly problematic.
Yes, they, it is an ideal, right? So typically, you know, you try to get the majority of the roofing or this work done during the summer. But in terms of the actual roofing itself, much of the roofing work, which is much more weather dependent, has been ripped and replaced. The brick work is actually a lot easier for them to do with the weather. I think the roofing is their highest concern, and even in terms of sunlight, there's different, even times of the day with the material they're working with, that it adheres better at certain times of the day. But they do feel now with the board moving forward, the change order this evening, having that scaffolding erected, that they will be able to get this work done, especially because again, the brick is not, was not as much of an issue for them as was the roofing, and they've been able to accomplish a lot on the roofing. And we have been, we're working very flexibly with them on Saturdays and Sundays, we're giving them access to the building, I'm using our construction manager, and both Joe is using some of his guys, so that we're really trying to get them when there's less impact, and so that they can kind of get that work done. So, you know, it's not ideal, but they feel comfortable with the schedule. We're very much, we meet twice a week, and we're really on top of that schedule, as much as you can be.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Were there any other questions or comments about the construction update? And I, we do appreciate knowing that at the next board meeting, there'll be a more extensive review of the budget and the projects overall. So thank you for working on that and towards that.
Okay.
So we're going to move on to the business items. Does anyone have any questions regarding business items, one through five?
Item number one, so we are voting on accepting the change order in the $500,000 range right now?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sorry, sorry, yes.
Yes, that is item number one.
Yes.
Other than that clarity, did anyone want to discuss that item? Or any of the others?
I just want to make it clear on this particular item, because I think, you know, just for, and this is really for the public, I'm not muted, I am muted, right? There are change orders that occur occasionally that are changes of work. This is a true emergency change order. There, you know, although we did secure three quotes, and luckily, we are, you know, we aren't a part of the project where we still have some flexibility moving forward, and we've also saved, and again, that'll be part of a much more detailed update on some of the other projects that we've done up until this point in time. This wall is an emergency repair, and I will, and I think it'll be helpful when we share photographs, just, you know, the photographs that we've taken of the wall in certain places, so the public can kind of see what we were dealing with. I mean, luckily, you know, it was discovered and we're able to repair it. But this change order unfortunately is, reflects really an emergency repair. Occasionally, a change order will reflect something we may like to have, but this one is really, there is, I think, from a safety perspective, we would have a hard time having occupancy of this building if it's not addressed. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public, really. I know the board understands that.
And having been on the rooftop, it really is astonishing to see the, I'm sorry, unmuted After a trip to the rooftop to actually see the decay of the walls, it really is astonishing, and it is absolutely a necessity to have that done. This is not, you know, a little area here and there, and we shared photos with you, so you've seen how extensive it is. It's not a matter of whether we can do it, it is, you know, how quickly we can do it to secure the, you know, the very important part of this infrastructure and to also make it safe. So this is timely. It's unfortunate, but it's a necessity. And as Maureen said earlier, having had experience with a construction project previously, it is absolutely what you find when you start, you know, dealing with the infrastructure of older buildings, you will find something else that you have to address. And so fortunately, they were able to, and at this time in which they were actually conducting the roofing, I mean, completing the roofing or starting the roofing project. So it's better that it happens now than later.
Thank you, Valerie. It's pretty amazing that you went up to the roof.
It's actually pretty scenic. It's actually pretty scenic on the rooftop, and you really appreciate the grounds in the village.
Is there a motion to approve business items one through five?
So?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're going to move on now to personnel. There are a great number of appointments, appointments one through 20. I didn't know, Valerie, if you wanted to speak to any of those in particular.
So on Friday, I made reference to the numbers of leave requests under the federal and state CARES Act, or COVID CARES Act. And this reflects them, and it's, again, our faculty and staff who are taking advantage of the provision, if they themselves need childcare, as well as other, you know, issues that impact their lives, they are taking advantage of the leave provisions. And it does require some fairly quick, you know, movement in terms of the process of recruitment, as well as identifying appropriate staff members who either are currently substitutes who've been with us, or others who are interested in being a substitute for short term. Sometimes it's, it could be as little as a month, or in certain cases, several months or longer. I'd like to thank our administrators for working really hard to find talented people who are available and who are able to serve our children well. Melissa and I spend time interviewing the candidates once the administrators have completed the process and task of bringing forth the best candidates. And obviously, if someone, if we learn something about a candidate that isn't, you know, currently available to us, that's some, that is information that we do follow up on and pursue, and so that, you know, is also noted in the list. So I'd just like to, again, welcome these new members to our school district, and they are starting, you know, as early as tomorrow, and I'm sure our students will be excited to work with them. So thank everyone for the work to make this possible.
I have a question. When somebody applies for a leave, can they then, when that leave has come to an end, can they apply to extend that leave for another?
They can. With the federal CARES Act, there are provisions to apply again for other circumstances. Again, it's all reviewed and vetted with legal counsel, so we have really good guidance about what we need to do. But we do have to, under the provisions of those acts, grant the request. But we do have to, under the provisions of those acts, grant the request. And none of these have been ones that, you know, that are in question at all. And in addition to the leaves, our faculty and staff may also request an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And that requires a bit more conversation with the building leadership team to address or try to understand the type of accommodations being requested and whether it's one that we can grant. But it is a part of the process, and as I said, we're doing, you know, everything that we can possibly do, including in cases where we have faculty who are, you know, hold that certification in that particular area and are able to pick up an additional point to cover that particular leave request.
Right. I'm just, I'm thinking of the parents who've been asked, who've been looking online and saying, okay, so this teacher's going to be back November 2nd, but we can't really confirm that that will happen because we don't know exactly what that person's status will be, just to confirm for the parents listening.
Exactly, because in a lot of cases, these are parents who have to provide childcare themselves. So they're in this sort of domino effect across this region where if their child's school, you know, is closed or operating in 100% remote mode or something else, they have to, you know, they have childcare needs as well. So it really is like a ripple effect across the entire system with regards to, you know, what impact the closing has on our own workforce. So it's not only us, you know, every district, you know, is dealing with this, but this is part of the pandemic. This is an outcome of the pandemic, and it's not, you know, individuals who are taking, you know, doing anything other than trying to make sure that they have childcare for their children or care for their family members.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going to start speaking about the leaves. I'd like to ask then Valerie a question as well, although it's, we're going to deal with it in a little bit. Five of the seven leaves coming up. It looks like the teachers who are taking these leaves, they're taking a pretty big pay cut to do this. If it maxes out at 200 a day, and I might be wrong, but I'd like you to clarify, it hurts to know that your kid's only going to school maybe two days a week, or maybe that's the right amount, if you feel that's the right amount. But when you do see a leave, I do like looking at this list and seeing how many of them that our administration found that have certifications in these areas. But the teachers that are staying home, sorry, I'll take down my bank robber mask. The teachers that are staying home, almost all of them, I think, are taking a 50% pay cut to do that. $200 a day, down from $500 a day, is significant. We do have two that I see aren't doing the expansion act. But could I ask you a question? If that was wrong, please correct me. But I am confused on number six, retired teacher Beth Rudd, when it looks like the next thing we're going to look at is approving her retirement. She is retiring, but she's willing to come back and teach a little bit because her letter sounded like she was hoping to hear that we would approve remote teaching, which I find, I don't think is part of our job right now as the state's trying to get us to teach in person. This is obviously the same Beth Rudd. We're about to vote on her retirement, and we're voting on getting her back in as much as she's willing to work.
So she, Beth was, did not plan to retire this year.
Okay.
So there were personal reasons that were important to her that led to that. And fortunately for us, she decided on her own to retire, but she also chose, out of the goodness of her heart, to teach the Syracuse University Project Advanced English College Credit, college courses, because there would be no one available to teach those, so we essentially have to drop those. So that's pretty significant, you know, when you think about the sort of domino effect with, you know, with the situation, because everyone has a different circumstance that impacts them. And she proposed that. She proposed it. So, and she also, as I said, is able to teach those courses, therefore, the students can remain enrolled and can, you know, obtain the credit, the college credit for those courses. So that's really significant. And as I said, it was her plan, and that shows you her dedication to her students and to the Hastings School District. So thank you, Beth. But thank you, Jeremy, for pointing that out.
So we've begun discussing all of the items under Personnel, sort of interchangeably. So are there any additional questions regarding appointments, retirements, or the leaves of absence under Personnel 7?
Yes, Lauren, item number seven, it looks like we're approving a lot of coaching positions and advisory positions, as we hope to have as much as we can in our best-case scenario, right? But last year, I think we pulled back on paying some of our spring coaches. Moving forward, is this sort of the same idea, that we are approving it, but I guess at any point that could change if those sports don't go through?
Well, we have greater clarity this time around from Section 1 and from the state. So I was in a conversation today with Drew about, you know, the plans to make sure that we're prepared, and he already, you know, obviously, he's very experienced in this arena, so he's very much aware of which of the teams should be, you know, ready to go. And we talked a lot about COVID preparation, you know, and the coaches having, you know, thermometers or, you know, touchless thermometers so that they can make sure that the athletes are, you know, healthy and that, you know, parents, parents don't have to worry about what happens on the fields. We also talked about making sure that our athletes had opportunities to play. So, for example, if modified as a moving forward, for example, you know, he's already looking into intramurals. We're looking into how we manage the lockers, because athletes will need, you know, some access to the lockers. And so that's ongoing, and it's, you know, actually pretty exciting to see that our athletes are going to have an opportunity to play and that, you know, some of the traditional fall athletic, or fall teams are being pushed to March, and it's a modified, you know, schedule. So that's actually, you know, much more, I think, hopeful than we were in March, looking at spring.
Maureen, were you wanting to add to that? I saw you hesitate. I don't know.
Oh, no, I think, I think, you know, like Valerie summed it up, I think, you know, if the school were to close fully, then of course, we prorate things. So I think, but we always have to be prepared. I think we waited, and we, of course, always fairly compensate people based on their time. And I think right now with the fall, because Section 1's moving forward, but I would imagine throughout the school year, if we ended up similar to what happened in March, then we may prorate, but for now, you know, the way they restructure the seasons, it seems clear we're going to move forward. And there is a financial commitment of some of the money, once people take it on, that with the preparation around the season, that we would have some liability there for what we're doing this evening. And I think they're, I'm not, also, I think they're more prepared also because I think, oh, sorry, I'm muted. Oh, goodness, sorry, goodness. Last year, the coaches really hadn't thought about how they would communicate with their players. So I think even in a closure, and I know that Jesse had started this work, and Drew really talked about ways to connect to players meaningfully, even if there were days that we were closed, so that unlike in the spring where that really wasn't, there wasn't a practice established around that, so they really didn't have the opportunity to do any of that work. So I'm pretty confident that this fall, we'll be paying our coaches because they've developed plans around whether, you know, they're not in all the time as well.
Thank you. So if we can look at Personnel items A, B, and C, is there a motion to approve all items under A, B, and C as a consent agenda?
No, we've only talked about A. I'm ready to vote on A. Sorry, no, I didn't want to recuse myself. I said, we've only talked about items A. I'm ready, I'm ready to vote on items A.
Great. I misperceived our conversation. I felt like we were, we had included some retirement and leaves a bit in our, we sprinkled those topics in, so we can do those separately, certainly. So is there a motion to approve the appointments under A, which is one through 20? And a second? Second? All in favor? We can now move on to the retirement. There's one retirement listed. Are there any comments or questions about that?
I just want to thank Beth again for her service to the school district and being an outstanding educator, and also someone who, in her 25 years, has been deeply committed to the success of all learners. And this was, again, as I mentioned earlier, a really generous act on her part to ensure that the super program continued.
Thank you, Valerie. Is there a motion to approve the retirement of Beth Rudd?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? We'll move on to C, which are the leaves of absence, one through seven. Are there any additional questions or comments regarding these leaves of absence?
Yes, picking up on what Allison was talking about earlier. It looks like five of the seven teachers are filing a leave request under the expansion part of the act. But there are two in here that are looking for an FMLA with pay. Is that something that we would talk about publicly? Why those would be with pay and why those two are not taking a 50% pay cut? Or do we need to deal with that in a private session?
Those are, those are best handled in an executive session, so as not to divulge any personal information about the reasons for. So we'd be happy to talk about those in an exec session. But again, it's both, so faculty and staff have access to provisions that are under the federal and state COVID CARES Act, as well as their contractual rights. And so I think what you'll see is a combination of that. So when an employee, you know, has a need to take a leave, they are looking at the full array of options that they have for them and for, you know, their needs. So if we have granted their request, these certainly have been reviewed carefully. And some people plan to come back, and because, obviously, they had to shift gears and make some decisions, so they're, you know, it's, you know, these are personal decisions, but I can tell you that none of these people really went into this wanting to take a leave.
Thank you for that clarification. I can see that one of the leaves, actually, as Allison was speaking about, is only for, to the end of this week. And the other one, definitely, we can remain private, and we can, personally, I can move forward with, until we see it repeating, I would be fine not looking into that at all.
Is there a motion to approve the leave request, leaves of absence, one through seven on the agenda? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We can now look at the approval of minutes. The minutes are posted for our meeting on September 1st. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on September 1st? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? So there are two items of new business. There's a district-wide code of conduct and the district-wide safety and emergency management plan, both of which were reviewed in the public hearings prior to the opening of the meeting. Are there any board questions or comments about the code of conduct? Is there a motion to approve the code of conduct as it's revised and attached to the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Likewise, there's the updates to the district-wide safety and emergency management plan. Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding this plan? Is there a motion to approve the new district-wide safety and emergency management plan?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're going to move to the second public comment period. I want to ask any members of the public that are viewing this meeting remotely to please put your name in the Q and A section of the meeting, which is down at the bottom of your screen. And if you do speak, if you can, please limit your comments to three minutes, and state whether you're a resident of Hastings. Janine Genauer, the clerk, district clerk, will be seeking to see if there are any names in the Q and A. All right, Janine is seeing two. If, Janine, you could please select the audio for the first commenter. We appreciate your patience as we navigate the audio for the participants who are viewing.
Kate, you should see yourself as a female. Kate, you should see yourself as a female.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. My name is Kate Roos Genofsky. I'm a Hastings resident, a territory three. My comment that I would like to make this evening, and once again, and I always appreciate the opportunity to address the board and commend the extraordinary work that you do. I wrote to the board on Wednesday regarding my personal concerns that the district may be falling short in providing equal access to public education, as well as free access to publication. And I look forward to a response on my letter. This evening, however, I wish to speak very, very briefly in regards to requesting reopening first grade full-time. In light of the plans that are now contemplated and being worked on for the AMPM model that would include a full-time first grade, first, full-time kindergarten, I appreciate that the ink has not yet dried. In many cases, it hasn't been written yet on, on some of these new plans for Hillside. I wanted to speak up on a potential opportunity to reopen first grade as well. And I do make these comments without wishing to say in any way that one grade is more deserving than another. But just as kindergarten has been addressed, I did want to speak out on behalf of first grade. Very briefly, for some of the reasons that were mentioned at the board's meeting on Friday. The first would be that our first graders are among our youngest learners. The students in kindergarten this year will be four, five, and six. The students in first grade this year are five, six, and seven. Our first graders, like our kindergartners, need in-person instruction in their learning model. It does not meet their pedagogical, as well as social and emotional development needs. Our first graders did not get a full year of kindergarten because of, in-person kindergarten, because the school closed in March, our current first graders were only in school for six months. Based on their experience being in school, they are still kindergartners. And there may not be an academic achievement different from our current first graders and our kindergartners. As Mrs. Kaisers has elaborated, and like, especially during the reopening forum on August 21st, the district is assuming a substantial gap or loss of learning due to last year's school closure, and is, the staff is particularly focusing on the power standards, which will be critical to make sure that each student is able to move on a grade level. It may be that most of our first graders are still at a kindergarten level, and will be for many months. So not only do they need to return to a classroom, because they could be at the same level as the kindergarten class that is being looked at for full-time, they need access and instructional attention in order to prevent further loss. And finally, I would just add that there are so many, once we've balanced new students in our kindergartens, which were they in our first grade. And that is also this children's first experience with Hillside. On a more personal note, I will share with you that when the news came out of a potential full-time kindergarten, I had not one, but two families reach out to me about what my thoughts were on requesting to have their first graders help back, so that they could access a full-time kindergarten. And I raised that issue only because there is such a keen interest in access to a full-time education, particularly for our youngest learners, that it can't be that these are the questions we're begging of our families. So I just wanted the board to be aware that those are some of the questions that are being asked. And again, I thank you so much for the district's extraordinary efforts to address, of course, what is, what is circulated at these times. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, you can hear me, right? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay.
Yes, we can. Go ahead and speak.
Okay, hello, board and administrators. I have a short question, really, just following on from something that Kate brought up, just from watching some of the quarterly meetings in the past couple of BOE meetings. So my understanding is that New York State has designated reopening as our immediate goal. And from watching the board meetings, what I think I, and most parents have seen, is that some of the reasons, some of the obstacles to reopening have been outlined and established. But there isn't any actionable plan for reopening. And an actionable plan would include milestones that would trigger reentry, either wholesale or in steps, as other districts have done. It would also structure efforts towards addressing some of the obstacles. So I have two questions for you. Number one, whose responsibility is it to produce a plan? And when can Hastings residents expect that sort of plan, a roadmap to reopening? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the second public comment. Did any board trustees have any comments this evening?
I did want to just thank the teachers and administrators for the days that have happened virtually so far. I know we get a range of responses, but it really was an incredible task, and it went very fluidly for many, many people. So I want to acknowledge the time and the effort that went into that, to have a strong start. So, thank you.
I guess I'd like to address my fellow board members, then, and of course, the administration always. And thank you for our public comments. I did find that actually quite interesting, what Kate Genofsky said. We are definitely, we've heard some prioritization of Hillside, and it's an interesting idea that our first graders, although they might not want to hear it, they have some unfinished kindergarten business that did not occur. And they're much bigger, much different. To the idea that I think Alex spoke a little bit, too, I would, I think it might be helpful, not to who's, not to who's deciding or that, but I'd like to speak to this idea that there is not a plan to reopen. I think in some ways, that is, we could push back against that. I think Valerie has announced a four-week plan, and we did it in August. I think our plan is the most conservative plan in the River towns, and it was respectful of teachers in that we gave an extra two weeks to anticipate and, and work towards where we're going. I think we're definitely trying to get to the same goal. Dobbs Ferry is on its fifth day of school for their middle schoolers and their elementary. Artsley is on their third day of school, and that includes high school students now. But to, to think that we're not moving forward with a plan, I think, is, is looking at some emails or conversations with confusion. I think our Friday's email from our administration was clear. There were no changes for Farragut and no changes for the high school, which means we are four days away from starting our reopening plan, which was, we've already fulfilled, we're in our second week of remote, and we're moving towards the hybrid plan. And the way I read that Friday email, there was no ambiguity there. It seems like we have stayed the course. And while Friday's discussion did add a new twist for feedback from faculty and teachers, I think it's only Hillside that has added another layer of possible difficulties. I would strongly suggest we try to be as clear as possible and give advance notice of any possible change in thinking. But even that Friday email said that we were still moving forward with our Plan Orientation Week. So parents and residents, I know we're a lot anxious. We need to read all the way to the middle of the emails and the bottom of the emails. We do have a plan. We have a four-week plan. We've been patient, trying to see what other districts have done before us. But we're coming up on the second phase of our plan. And I look forward to seeing how the end of September works, how our teachers adjust, how we find our staffing levels. And I have faith that the next plan will be announced clearly. But I don't see the need right now to make any changes, and I think that's been clearly communicated. And I hope we are able to stay that way. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Valerie.
Are there any other board members that wanted to comment?
I just wanted to share an anecdote. That I was speaking with a middle schooler and sort of talking about how remote learning is different from in-person, pre-pandemic learning, or just in-person learning in general. And the middle schooler pointed out to me that in traditional classroom schooling, the teachers spend much of their time getting the students to stop talking. And that in remote learning, they spend most of their time trying to get the children to talk. And it really is, this middle schooler told this to me a few weeks ago, and it's really, it's just stuck with me. And having now observed, now into the second week, remote learning in my own home with two, a kindergartner and an eighth grader, I'd have to say that's true. And if there's anything that we take with us as we move back into the buildings, I hope that we continue to listen and ask the children to talk more, because I think that's what's going to make the transition back together and the buildings continue to work.
Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting this evening?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.